To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, does anyone have changes to the agenda order? Alright, I have one change to the agenda order. It is Bob Mosher's birthday today. He's leaving the room, he's fleeing, but he needs to come back. But it's Bob Mosher's birthday today. So before we start...
There's no place I'd rather be.
Oh, yeah. We'll have to come up here and blow now. I know, I know. What's the big idea, Amy?
Yeah, the power might.
Yeah, will the smoke alarm go off? Yeah, I know, this was not, this is enough. I'm only gonna do some of these, or we're gonna be here all night, not with voting.
We're gonna go to your house later.
I know what your wish is gonna be.
Thank you. Alright.
Get us out of here.
Are we all ready to sing? Please turn off your microphone. Alright.
Ready?
Ready.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Bob. Happy birthday to you.
And many more.
There's napkins, there's...
I'll put this over here for her.
We have a part for you too. But Allison has a sign together. Alright. Moving along. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes from last meeting? Alright, is there a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I make a motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on to voting procedures. You've all received this, this is on the website, but I'm gonna reiterate it, so we're all clear about what's gonna happen next. The, this is one change, one slight change from what I announced last time, which is why I'm going over it again. Voting will begin with each commissioner writing the names of three candidates on a ballot, or actually checking off the names of three candidates on a ballot and signing that ballot. There will be no specific order to the named candidates, no weight assigned to them in terms of points. Ballots will be collected and read by staff, and each named candidate will be recorded with a single tally. Commissioners will be asked to confirm those ballots, just by a voice confirmation. The three candidates plus any ties who receive the most tallies will advance to the next round. All others will be eliminated from consideration. To be clear, no candidate can be appointed in that first round, it's just intended to narrow the field to a group of finalists. We have two staff members who will be counting votes. Staff will confer to double-check the vote tallies after the first round. The three candidates plus ties will advance, receiving the most tallies will advance. Once the field of candidates has been narrowed, voting in a round-by-round format will commence. Each commissioner will cast a written ballot, naming a single candidate of that commissioner's preference. Ballots will be collected and read allowed by staff, votes will be recorded. If a candidate receives the legally required eight or more votes in any round, that candidate is appointed to the Board of Education. It's mathematically impossible for two candidates to receive eight votes, or more. If no candidate receives eight votes in a given round, any candidate not receiving a single vote will be eliminated from consideration. If all candidates receive at least one vote, the field remains the same. A subsequent round of voting will then be conducted, and the remaining candidates eligible, with the remaining candidates eligible to receive votes. The process will continue until a candidate receives at least the necessary eight votes. After each round, I will ask if any commissioners wish to make comments. Once we begin voting, we will continue voting until we have an appointment. If we reach a point where the commission feels there needs to be a break, we will do so. However, I will only allow one commissioner to leave the dais at any given time, so we're not, we can't be conferring in the bathroom. The candidate appointed tonight will need to be sworn in at a later date by the clerk of the Circuit Court's office. Are there any questions? Alright, at this time, I'd like to ask for any public participation, a reminder that public participation is limited to three minutes. If there's none, we will move on. We will now begin the voting.
So you have a ballot for round one, which is a checklist.
Yes, each commissioner has a ballot for round one, so please make your selections.
Okay. Commissioner Jones has named Mr. Caminiti, Mr. Reinhardt, and Ms. Sutherland. Correct?
That is correct.
Commissioner Bennett has named Mr. Colbert, Mr. Jackson, and Mr. Reinhardt. Correct?
That is correct.
Ms. Holler has named Mr. Caminiti, Mr. Reinhardt, and Ms. Rober.
That is correct.
Ms. Uribe has named Mr. Caminiti, Ms. Pets, and Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Ms. Vance has named Ms. Pets, Mr. Reinhardt, and Mr. Wright.
Correct.
Vice Chairman Pickard has named Ms. Pets, Mr. Reinhardt, and Ms. Shore.
That is correct.
Mr. Klasmeier has named Ms. Devlin, Mr. Reinhardt, and Ms. Rober.
That is correct.
Dr. Farrar has named Ms. Devlin, Ms. Pets, and Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Ms. Cantwell has named Ms. Devlin, Ms. Pets, and Mr. Wright.
Correct.
Ms. Brandonberg has named Ms. Devlin, Ms. Irvin, and Ms. Pets. Ms. Uria has named Mr. Caminiti, Mr. Reinhardt, and Ms. Shore.
Correct.
Chairman Kipki has named Ms. Devlin, Ms. Pets, and Mr. Wright.
Correct.
While they tally the votes, would any commissioner like to explain their vote? Okay.
Okay, candidates receiving votes. Mr. Caminiti, four, Mr. Colbert, one, Ms. Devlin, five, Ms. Irvin, one, Mr. Jackson, one, Ms. Pets, seven, Mr. Reinhardt, nine, Ms. Rober, two, Ms. Shore, two, Ms. Sutherland, one, Mr. Wright, three. So your top three are Mr. Reinhardt, Ms. Pets, and Ms. Devlin. So those are the three that you will have to consider for round two.
Would you please repeat the top three?
Mr. Reinhardt, Ms. Pets, and Ms. Devlin. Okay, in round two, Commissioner Jones has voted for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Bennett votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Holler votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Uribe votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Vance votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Commissioner Pickard votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Klasmeier votes for Ms. Devlin.
That's correct.
Dr. Farrar votes for Ms. Devlin.
That is correct.
Commissioner Cantwell votes for Ms. Devlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Brandonberg votes for Ms. Pets.
Correct.
Commissioner Uria votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Commissioner Kipki votes for Ms. Pets. So Mr. Reinhardt has seven votes, Ms. Pets has two votes, Ms. Devlin has three votes, so they all remain for round three.
Let's move on to round three.
Commissioner Kipki, do we have the opportunity to share our voting, or now that we're down to three at this, between these rounds, or is that...
You, you can explain your vote from the previous round, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what you said in your procedures.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't give you the opportunity.
Oh, no, no, thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about my board experience, and what I think is so important when you start to build, or have the opportunity to put a member on the Board of Education. It took some time today, or yesterday, and I built a matrix as far as what our current board members have, as far as their experience and their education, and then what you might be looking for as a commission moving forward. One of the reasons that I truly enjoy, and I think the world of Carrie Pets, is she has the ability to jump in. She's been put forward by this commission more than once. And she has a little bit of a different background, she has a bachelor's in psychology, and she does sales and marketing at this stage. Excuse me, but when you go through and you look to say, okay, you know, where, where are our current board members? We have a teacher, a teacher, a professor, somebody who's involved in education, a teacher, a student member of the board, and then attorney, and policy and legislative. And so I think it's really important to have a different perspective, when you look forward and you move forward to say, okay, what does this person bring that's a little different than, say, an education background? And for those reasons, I will continue to vote for Carrie Pets. Thank you.
Yes.
I'd also like to explain my vote. I concur with everything Commissioner Brandonberg just said regarding candidate Pets. However, I think one important, I've also served on the Board of Education. I think one very important thing missing, and that's been missing from our Board of Education for over a decade, is representation from North County. That was one of my main reasons for selecting Mr. Reinhardt. Along with his excellent interview, I feel his demeanor and his presence will be an asset to the current Board of Education that is currently also predominantly female. I think a gender balance also brings a whole nother perspective. And he is an entrepreneur, business owner. So with those, with those things, that tipped my vote. And I'm actually surprised that I have voted that way today. So I just wanted to share that with the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to explain their vote for this round? Alright, so we'll...
Okay, the third round. Commissioner Jones has voted for Mr. Reinhardt. Ms. Bennett has voted for Mr. Reinhardt. Commissioner Holler has voted for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Commissioner Uribe votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That's correct.
Commissioner Vance votes for Ms. Pets.
Correct.
Vice Chairman Pickard votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Klasmeier votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That's correct.
Commissioner Farrar votes for Ms. Devlin.
That's correct.
Commissioner Cantwell votes for Ms. Devlin.
Correct.
Commissioner Brandonberg votes for Ms. Pets.
Correct.
Commissioner Uria votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
And Chairman Kipki votes for Ms. Pets. So the votes are Mr. Reinhardt, seven, Ms. Pets, three, Ms. Devlin, two. No one has the necessary eight, and the same three remain for round four.
So, can we have a moment to just review the, I wanna look at the resumes, because if we're gonna, you know...
Sure. There was one important part that I had left out for last time.
Right.
And I would agree with everything that... Would anybody like to explain their vote, and during that time, please, yes. And if it's not enough time, we'll take a break, and anyone who needs to use the restroom can do so.
I cannot agree with more, with everything that Commissioner Pickard said as well. It is absolutely true that there's representation needed from both North County and from that male perspective. I think what Ms. Pets brings is the Hispanic and diversity vote as well, which is incredibly important. There's concerns, one, as this commission was put forward, about how important diversity was. And secondly, as we move into an elected school board, I think it's incredibly important, when we have an opportunity to make sure that we have the minority voice represented, that we put that on there. Thank you.
Anyone else like to explain their vote?
I would. Thank you. I do agree with everything that has been said so far about both candidates that have been talked here today. I do just want to explain why myself representing an organization such as CASA is gonna keep voting for Mr. Reinhardt here, even though he is not himself a minority, and even though he does represent an education background, which we have a lot of on the board. Do want to reiterate, he does represent a part of the county that has no representation right now, frankly. And I also just want to bring credit to the fact that he had a substantial time as an educator in Montgomery County, and had shown substantial experience with dealing with immigrant students and minority students in Montgomery County. I do feel he can bring a great perspective from his time serving in that county, as well as from his experience residing and living in North County. Thank you.
I would like to explain my vote. So the reason I continue to vote Reinhardt is because during his interview, I agree with everything Commissioner Pickard said. Just his demeanor made me very passionate. Even people from Crask were watching that interview, they were texting me saying, "Man, I love this guy." And I have to agree, because as he is explaining what he does in the classroom, and how he makes students wanna learn more about that topic, that's just amazing, because I know a lot of students hate school for some reason. And I just love to see his passion with dealing with students, and just the way he brings about the light of the classroom. And not only that, but I loved where he said, he knows it's an at-large position, and he's ready to go at it with an unbiased. He knows he represents North County, but he's ready to be unbiased in that position, which is why I voted for him. Thank you.
I'd like to explain my votes. I've voted for both Mr. Reinhardt and Ms. Pets. And representing the Antirundal Chamber of Commerce, I believe they're both committed to engaging businesses, as well as the private-public partnership. So they both kind of got a notch on my guitar that way. But I do believe Reinhardt's answers and his ideas were the most innovative, and his, the answers to really everyone's questions were eloquently said, not just from a grammatical standpoint, but from a substance standpoint.
I would like to also add why I voted for Mr. Reinhardt. I think that we need somebody with a new dynamic and new perspective. And I think he has this ability to reach the community as a person that doesn't have any bias or any power position or anything. He's just a man who has worked hard in the county, who now is an entrepreneur, and he still cares about the schools even as an entrepreneur. He did not bring us donuts, which I might have to say, the bride would have helped, just kidding. But he definitely brought something that I didn't expect, which was definitely the passion that he's, and the way he spoke. And it seems like even if he wasn't in the position, I believe that man will continue to give something back to the community, even if he's not sitting in this board in the future. But I hope he will be, in my personal opinion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to explain my vote as well. I didn't know Colin Reinhardt before he sat in the air in the chair, although I knew of him by virtue of being a teacher in one of the schools that I represent. But I'm looking at what we're, what we're trying to find is the best candidate for a seat on the Board of Education. And I think he is, by the nature of his history, the best candidate. He's been a teacher, he's been a quasi-administrator by being a department chair. So you know what it's like to be in a classroom, you know what it's like to supervise people that are in the classroom. And now he's a businessman, he's got knowledge on a ground level in teaching, he's got knowledge what administrators go through, and he's got the same concerns that business people have. So he's got a touch with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not sure if he's a member of the North County Chamber or not, easily checked on. He's also a parent with kids in the school system. So he's got a connection to the PTA, and he's a volunteer in the schools. And you couple that up against, along with the, probably the most sincere and heartfelt responses we got from any interviewer, any interview we questioned. And, as was already said once, we need some representation in North County, it's been missing for a decade, and we need some more gender diversity on the board. He's the only candidate that has all of those qualifications.
Alright. We're moving on to round four?
Round four.
Round four? Alright. Commissioner Bennett, have you had enough time to look over...
Idea, just, you know, say, well, let me just look again. Because I know we all would be here tonight, so...
Understood. Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, round four votes. Commissioner Jones votes for Mr. Reinhardt. Commissioner Bennett votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Commissioner Holler votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Uribe votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That is correct.
Commissioner Vance votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Vice Chairman Pickard votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Commissioner Klasmeier votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Commissioner Farrar votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
That's correct.
Commissioner Cantwell votes for Ms. Devlin.
Correct.
Commissioner Brandonberg votes for Ms. Pets.
Correct.
Commissioner Yurea votes for Mr. Reinhardt.
Correct.
Commissioner... Chairman Kipki votes for Ms. Pets.
Correct.
So the votes are Mr. Reinhardt, nine. Ms. Pets, two. Ms. Devlin, one. So Mr. Reinhardt has the requisite eight votes to be appointed to the Board.
It's only 9:20, so 7:29. Is there any other business before we adjourn? Congratulations.
I was gonna say, can we say congratulations?
Absolutely, congratulations to you.
Yes, we would like to say congratulations.
Yes, would anyone like to explain their final vote?
No, but I would like to say, having both been through the nominating process, and then serving on the board, I would like to say a hearty thank you to the Chair, and all of the commissioners here, and of course, Bob and Molly. I think this commission has done an outstanding job, and we've created a procedure that will most likely have to be used again. And I think between now and 2020, so, well done us! This was a good experience. It was not easy, and I think our Chair did a fantastic job.
And to add to that, thank you to everybody who came for interviews, because taking their time to come speak to us, I know it's hard. And being a first-timer in this, I have learned a lot, and I thank everybody for their support. And I am very happy and honored to be here and being able to vote. Thank you.
And lastly, I want to say, I think that none of us took this decision lightly. I think we had a solid group of candidates that came before us, which made, you know, it very difficult and challenging, even when we had to put three names forward. There were other names that I would have loved to put forward as well. And so I think I speak for all of us when I say that we had a really good field of candidates. And I appreciate everyone who came out and put themselves out here to apply.
Absolutely.
Shall we have cake?
Do you have to move to adjourn?
Oh, I'll move to adjourn.
A second. All in favor?